Welcome, welcome, welcome to Conversations with Cheryl Weston. This is our review of the City of Omaha City Council Agenda for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. This is going to be kind of an interesting and this is going to be a different review than we've done in the past. Cause we want to keep on improving on our reviews. So we're trying something a little different this time. This is part one of the City Council Review. And we're going to focus on items 12 and 13. So let's get started. It will be the usual. This week's remarks will be by Councilmember Danny Bagley of District 3. They go through da, 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 da. Okay, so item six is the liquor. 169, no problem, public hearing vote today. Then items seven and eight will be the preliminary plat entitled PSA Acres. This is south of 108th Street. Here again, shouldn't be any problem. The planning board is approved, no problem. Cherry Creek. Nine, 10, and 11. September 16th will be the public hearing, the vote and so forth. Nothing there Cherry Creek Drive, Potter Street. Nothing should be, no problem. Now we're going to get into the area we want to focus on today. It's review for Tuesday, September the 16th. Item 12 and 13. This is the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan. Now, why am I bringing this up? Is because, guess what? This is related to the streetcar. And therefore, this item 12, it is the amendment to the Urban Core Housing Mobility Redevelopment Plan. This has to pass and be approved. That's where you're having the public hearing and the vote today in order for item 13 to take place, which we're really going to dwell into that one too. But let's take a look at this particular. We're going to get it back up here because it just transferred over. So this is the attached resolution. This is going to be the, for the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan, which has been laid out and this was underneath the city. Or the mayor at the time of the city was Gene Stothard. So this was supposed to do. This redevelopment project, so well, let me back up a little bit. This is your clue right there, folks. This didn't just didn't happen underneath John Ewing. You know, he spoke about his intentional economic development. This, it was in the works. This was already going to take place. There's no ifs, ands, and about it. This just didn't happen since these 100 or so days that he's been in. Okay. And, and here's where you can see it. Lays out the vision for the greater downtown area. So you know, anything that was with the downtown area was, has been in the works and there's nothing that's going to change. So this redevelopment project is saying it includes transit and mobility created by the modern streetcar. Joke, joke. Affording affordable housing development and related supportive mobility infrastructure and public amenities. So as you go through this, and I know people don't want to do all that. So we're going to break it down in little parts so that you don't have to. All right. So a program for the development of this affordable and workforce housing includes the process for funding such development. If you move down a little bit. The city's participation will support redevelopment in accordance with this development plan. And the city's objective to provide equitable, diverse, diverse, remember those words? Diverse and affordable housing options in downtown Omaha, as well as to support increased employment opportunities through the participation of the tax increment financing. But then, when you see that word TIF, remember what TIF is supposed to be about. And it's supposed to be in blighted areas. Now, we all know dag on good and well, the, where the area of the streetcar is not a blighted area. That's a joke. All right. And so here again, the plan supersedes previous planning efforts. So it was in the works, I'm telling you. And this was recommended by the approval of an August 6th, 2025 public hearing. Okay. Let's. Whereas the continued development of downtown Omaha is a high priority of the City of Omaha. Remember that. The continued development of downtown Omaha. All right, Mayor Ewing, I remember when what was, was going to have high priority when you were running was North and South Omaha. But now that you've become mayor, you have accepted this, the continued development of downtown Omaha is a high priority. Whereas, here it is, this go back to this. Sometimes they always tell you, when I was in school was sometimes read the paragraph before your main paragraph. After you read the important paragraph that you want to push and so forth. The primary objectives of the City of Omaha's master plan and community development program are to encourage additional investments and develop within inner city neighborhoods and to eliminate conditions which are detrimental to public health, safety, welfare by developing underutilized properties within these neighborhoods. So tell me now, how this fits into the inner city? Because you know, the inner city is definitely not downtown Omaha. They call this the no, no dough. Because when they put that hotel up there at 6th and Dodge Street to separate, that was the guiding line as to what you consider North Omaha and downtown Omaha. And downtown Omaha is nowhere in any inner city or conditions which are detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So let's move on down the line. Let me point out something else to you. This amendment to the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan authorizes certain additional redevelopment projects, including the development of affordable workforce housing and the enhancement of rapid transit bus bicycle to the modern streetcar and market to midtown protected bicycle network on and on. But let me get this, folks, remember. Here's your thing, urban core housing and mobility. This is not inner city North Omaha or any South Omaha. The urban core development is all of that that is around the streetcar. This amendment authorizes the city to participate in the redevelopment project identified through the allocation of tax increment financing in up to the amount of $440 million. Because, and why is this? Because right now it's so-called projected, the streetcar. The city's participation is at, has been authorized for $440 million. And they've already estimated that it is going to cost right now $441 million. And this amendment confirms the city's Omaha's master plan and the legislative declarations and determination of the community development law to identify within therein would not be equitable or econo- equitable, having a problem with that word, economically feasible and would not occur within the redevelopment project area without the use of TIF. Baloney, baloney, baloney. Okay? Now, we will get into, because this is where you folks, you're not catching it. The Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan with this amendment will authorize the city's participation through the allocation of TIF up to the amount of $490 million. So if it's going to go up to that, it already tells you that this streetcar project is going to cost way more than the, uh, right now $441 million. It's baloney, baloney. It is baloney. Now, we're going to get into a little bit more. I don't want to. Here is a couple of items before we go in a little bit further. The city urban core areas has 21 active vibrant district and neighborhoods. So now if they're vibrant districts and neighborhoods, would you please explain how they are in these underdeveloped areas? Non revitalized areas? Because it says, go and look up the word, what does vibrant mean? Now tell me, how does that fit into the TIF definition? You know, but they know that the city council will approve whatever comes before them. And it will be another, hey, we got you citizens of Omaha. We got you. So here 17 cultural entertainment and sport venues, 21 major companies and institutions and seven K through 12 schools. So will you please tell me, explain again, how does that fit into the TIF definition of areas who are blighted? Who have not been economically vitalized? Areas that are problems, safety problems, health problems? Tell me, folks. But oh, well, you know, we don't know anything, us everyday citizens. Baloney, baloney. And then, this is not all of it. Capitalizing on this, opportunities in this plan will reaffirm downtown and midtown Omaha as the center of employment, housing, and entertainment. By connecting affordable housing to public transportation, the city can attract a diverse workforce, support local businesses, and encourage investments, investments in underserved areas. But you just said the city core already has 21 active vibrant districts and neighborhoods. But, oh, oh, right, that's right. But they are underserved. Joke, joke, joke. But let's move on, because I do want to show you something else. Here is the communication in support. NIFA, which we all know, that's the state NIFA. They go hand in hand with the city, particularly when the mayor puts his little stamp on it. So this was from NIFA, Shannon Harner, the NIFA, NIFA Executive Director. Then we have this letter of support from Habitat of Humanity. Well, why wouldn't they support it? Look at how much money has been given to the Habitat for Humanity. And I think, I've been thinking about that after I read this and everything. And I've attended several meetings where, you know, they give this money to the Habitat of Humanity for Omaha. And I want to go back to, I got to do more research is to find out exactly how much money has been given to them. So, and then let's move on down a little bit more. This is an individual who has amended, I am writing in support of the Housing Mobility Plan. Because she says here, I am a new developer in Omaha where I have built a missing middle four townhouse, affordable housing with the support of Front Porch Investments. The townhouses are on the corner of 28th and Pratt Street. Now 28th and Pratt Street is in an underserved area. It has not, but here's where we go. This letter here, and I don't know this individual, this Fraser. I only know about her, she's the CEO of 50 Ventures LLC. I do have some information on that 50 Venture LLC that we'll be talking about a little bit later at another program. But here it is, okay, yeah, this, you know what this reminds me of? Is when they had a recent cabinet meeting of, Trump had his recent cabinet meeting and he had all these individuals there sat around and they kissed his butt. Oh, thank you, thank you, you've been so great, da, da, da. Well, what do you think? What do you think this individual, when I look at that, that's what comes to mind? 28th and Pratt, that's where you got your funding from Front Porch. So you're definitely going to kiss the butt of Front Porch. You're definitely going to do that because guess what? She wants more money, folks. Good common sense. So we'll get back over. This is the amendment 12th, that has to go in effect before 13th, which is why you're seeing public hearing and vote today. That is happening. Now, go into ordinance 44402. This is approving the development contract between the City of Omaha and Front Porch Investments for the oversight and the administration of funding affordable housing development projects implemented pursuant to the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan. So they had to amend the plan here in 12th in order to get this to go, be able to go approve. And here's your public hearing today. This will establish the various policies, procedures, and so forth, use of tax increment financing to the construction of affordable housing with the UNE, Urban Core Redevelopment Area to support the authorization of up to $40 million bond sales is basically. And this is why I'm trying to explain to you, that 40 million, that was already in play. The anonymous, so-called anonymous donor. What will happen is these bonds that will be approved will be put through our, the city's usual bond dealer. They will go on the open market immediately. Then that 40 million anonymous donor, who will purchase those will take place. And then they will be able to start, because I'm going to show you that this project was already in play and it will start immediately in, by 2026. So here is the public hearing. And this is, this is the letter that has to go. You see that he signed this, 913 Mayor John Ewing. Or 93, I'm sorry. I'm telling you, folks, this is all in the making, had been set. And all of that baloney, sorry, sir, about looking out for the areas that need revitalization. This is going to be, that revitalization for North and South Omaha will be going on the back burner. Except for, and we can talk about that at another time, what's going to happen in South Omaha with the monies that are going over there. Anyway, this is just the, how should I say? I don't like to say the word garbage, but it is, it's just this stuff that they're going to put out there that nobody's going to read and it will go through. Okay? On and on and on, here's the redevelopment plan. But what I want you to notice again, as I said, day one, this contract, urban core and so forth, will be for the urban core housing and mobility redevelopment. And this is in order to go back to here, in order to get this so that Front Porch will be the one who will be doing the, all the, as we talked about, the administration of it. Front Porch. So my point when I say this, between the City of Omaha and Front Porch, it's nothing new, folks. Only thing has changed, this is the same old game, it's just some of the names of the players have changed. But it's the same old game, they are pulling on the city, citizens of Omaha. And as citizen, and when you don't vote, this is what happens. You look at, these are some of the support. This is nothing new. These are all people who have been involved, have gotten money. Here's NIFA again, Newton, Omaha, Chamber. It, it, it's just like I said, folks, it's all the same, it's the same game. It's just that some of the names of the players have changed. Here again, Habitat, Chamber, all of them. Why this isn't going to be for North and South Omaha? This is all for the urban core. So a lot of people, you have this misunderstanding of what the urban core is. The urban core has nothing to do with the underdeserved and invested areas of North and South Omaha. Let me, and the reason why I want to, oops. I wanted to bring this back over to an article that was in the Nebraska Examiner by Cindy Gonzalez on August 1st, 2025. Okay. Nearly 2,000 affordable homes seen for Nebraska's largest city under new plan tied to the streetcar. Folks, when it tells you if it's something new, the only thing new is the name of the players. But it's tied to the streetcar and we all know the streetcar is old news. But here's some that some people did not really read, who haven't read this article and didn't see. The dwellings will be a mix of rental for sale and rehab properties in the 770 block area around the streetcar. That's where this is. This will be targeted to people making under a certain income and they'll be built by developers selected by Front Porch Investment. You know who those developers are going to be because they have already been chosen? And guess what? Those developers, most of them are all going to be same ones that you've heard of. Here's where we need to make your voice hurt and say, no, you got our taxes. This has to be opened up to other developers. Now, it says, the report said, the state economic future hints on solutions and calls for these goals include cutting the share of low to moderate income households, paying more than 30% of their earnings rent from 44% to 33%. And here's where I want you to get. This is going to be, right here, here's your clue, it tells you. The city's portion would be up, you know, 421 million. But remember, in that amendment that we just read, it will now be able to go up to 40, $490 million. If approved by the necessary channels, here, this would allow related housing production to start as soon as 2026. Not in North Omaha, not in South Omaha, but in those seven, seven zero blocks. Now, mayor said housing affordable, affordable housing units, options was an issue that Ewing campaigned on. So let's continue on. This anonymous donor funder, which they already had knew about, is going to buy the 40 million in city bonds, which would grant Front Porch. This is when I say, this is all baloney, this is all set up, it's already been in the make. It was going to happen underneath Stothard, it was going to happen underneath Ewing. The bonds would be used to repay from the TIF increment financing, but it would allow it to start, like I said before, 2026. Now, moving right along, the city council early approved the total bond funding of 490 million and specified that 440 million in bonds would go to the streetcar construction. And if you took time, you would see, this is this little area. When the private funder buys the 40 million in municipal bonds, it would generate immediate funds, accelerating the ability to spend part of the money on affordable housing. The 10 million would be available for later, here you go, later, later, housing or biking or mobility projects. So what does this tell you, folks? Later, those are projects that's already on the board. They're already thought about, designed, and there's going to be. Okay. The city, there will be no citywide property tax increase, no money diverted from other city projects to use from properties outside of the streetcar quarter. Only revenue from the new or redevelopment income producing commercial and multifamily properties will be used to fund the streetcar affordable housing, bikeways, and mobility improvements. That's what they said now. So let's move. Here's where I wanted you to point out. This is how they always do North and South Omaha. Folks, do you understand again, the urban core does not mean North and South Omaha. This housing, the boundaries in which this batch of housing units can be created is Coming Street to the north, Woolworth William Street to the south, and Missouri River to the east, as far as 50th Avenue to the west. Does that include North and South? No, folks, many of you think when you hear, oh, urban area, it is not North and South Omaha. But I like how they, this is how they always do North and South Omaha. While this does not cover the hearts of North and South Omaha, Holston, Jody Holston, who came from the Omaha Housing Authority to become director for the Front Porch. It, that's all a game, folks, it's all who knows who, friends, it's cronies, they all are in this. Said, Front Porch is separate, ongoing affordable housing fund currently serves the North and South Omaha areas. And you do know those funds have been, have been reduced, Mayor Ewing, do you realize that? Do you realize what stipulations go on the new funding mechanism in the Front Porch? Ewing says he hopes to far expand farther into North and South Omaha layer, later. Okay, let me, I want to highlight this because hopefully. Ewing says he wants to expand farther into North. Ewing says he wants to expand farther into North, Om- South and later, later. It is always later for North Omaha, later, later, always, always. But he says there's going to be intentional economic development. Uh, and here. And I always like Cindy Gonzalez's way she writes, because she does, she's so thorough. Anyway. Holston of Front Porch called the project a perfect example of what's possible when city leadership and community priorities align. Front Porch has a history with the city as the former mayor, Gene Stothard in twenty twenty-two granted the nonprofit twenty million dollars from the city's share of federal ARPA funds to boost affordable housing options. So folks? Anybody ask the question? Mayor Ewing, let me ask you, since you're now the mayor, where's that twenty million? Can you give us the citizens of Omaha? Since you're giving now North or um, Front Porch forty more million dollars to operate in? You're not actually giving them, say, hand it, but you're giving it in a sense, you're allowing them to be the administrator. So how, we want to, we want to know, where did the twenty million that they got from Stothard? Where was that applied to? Ah, I just had it. I think that's a public information request. Alright. And it went on. If you go back, you read this article, it is really eye-opening if you look at it. Um, and like I said, it's well-written, Cindy, she researches, she does her interview. Now here is eligible income levels will vary, but the homes will generally be limited to households making to thirty to eighty percent of the area's median income. And others to those earning eighty percent to a hundred. Folks? You North and South Omaha folks, you don't fit, you're lower than that. Because you don't know, you don't even make the medium income. Most of us in North and South Omaha are not even getting the minimum wage. We got people who's arguing about that. But many are making have an annual income, annual income of twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year. So are you gonna be eligible for this? Are they gonna let you in? I bet you not, because you know what? There's gonna be the stipulations, the credit. It's gonna be this and it's gonna be always an excuse, why you won't get that, your credit's not good or what? How in the heck is your credit gonna be outstanding at eight hundred or even seven hundred? When you're making less than thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars a year and you've gotta pay for everything? Out of that thirty, that's just your gross? How do you think you're gonna have? I bet you, there's gonna be stipulations. And I wanna see how many are going to be able to move into those homes. I wanna see that. Also, when people don't understand, when this goes in and you build up with this TIF money, you build up that area? You build it up, guess what, folks? They're telling you your taxes won't go up, your levy's gonna go. It won't, it is going to be because you're going to have a higher tax space of homes in the area. If those homes, if you're currently at uh homes that's at two hundred and fifty thousand. And of course, we're not talking about this particular, but it's just logical. If you're at, at two hundred and fifty and they start putting new development and those homes and stuff are start selling at three hundred thousand? You don't think your, your tax is gonna go up? I think not. I think you are thinking not clearly. So this is the reason why I really wanted to bring this up regarding the uh items twelve and thirteen. We will do the remaining portion of the city council review in uh part two for Omaha City Council, September sixteenth, Tuesday at two o'clock. And I wanna make one more quick little note on this. Guess what, folks? As I said, this is item twelve and thirteen. Do you know why that's gonna be item twelve and thirteen? I will not be surprised if you won't have a little visit from the Mayor Ewing or his chief of staff to talk about this. And I can almost bet you, you will. And so it has to be early on the agenda. So because you know, they're very busy, they're doing a lot of meetings and discussions, so they gotta get in and get out. So this will be before the public hearing starts on this. That's the reason why they're gonna probably be there to talk about this, to sell you as if it was like it needed to be sold to the city council when they already know that they're gonna vote yes. I will say, you'll probably get a seven to zero. So don't be surprised. And then you'll also have probably Jody Holston will be there. Um, so, and then all these supporters have sent this letter, uh the kisser-uppers. But you know, they don't even have to really, but they'll just show up anyway. But hopefully, folks, you'll get out and let your voice be heard. So thanks for tuning in. We will continue with part two for the Omaha City Council Agenda for Tuesday, September sixteenth.